Several times, I think.
All right, we've got a special meeting here to discuss proposed food truck regulations because we've suddenly have food trucks appearing around town. And there are some people who think that we ought to be some rules about where they are, where they can be, and so forth. We, as the zoning commission, are inviting you to help us in discuss what regulations might be good and what might be bad. We did that with the agritourism part of our regulations, and I think it worked very well. People said, "Oh, we move. What about our horse show?" Well, horse shows are as of right now, so there will be some things in food trucks that may be as of right, and some things that will require a permit, I suspect. But anyway, with that as a start, George, you know, you put together some draft things. Do you want to explain where we are at this point?
Yeah, you did a good job of kind of framing the issue. We put some language together in response to several different things. Lauren did a good job of trying to understand the issue. It really came at us from really three different areas, I think. One, we had a food truck come to town and locate at a, probably what I would call an unrelated retail business. We had a Chick-fil-A food truck come and spot at the Tractor Supply. So we didn't have a framework, but we were like, well, how do we deal with it? It's not permitted under the current regulations. So that was one thing that spurred. The second is, we talked to folks like Chris Nelson, who were interested in having a food truck on premises at a brick-and-mortar as part of the overall operations there. And that kind of would come from almost as an accessory use. Wouldn't be mobile at all, in fact. It would be almost a permanent accessory use at that location. And the third is really the special events type of thing where folks are doing parties or at public gathering permits. We are not trying to address those in these regulations. We're really not trying to do that. We're trying to address, and again, the regulations. We had to put something out there to start the conversation. They are clearly not intended as the beginning or the end. They're just there, and we want to make sure that we hear from, you hear from different perspectives from the business community. You understand that there are concerns. Certainly, the brick-and-mortar folks have real concerns about impacts of these kinds of uses on their businesses. And then there are entrepreneurs who are looking to locate Talke Mountain Collective. A good example, where you've got a food truck that comes there virtually every weekend. And we have to figure out whether we want them in our community and then how to permit them. So you've got a pretty good cross-section of folks who might want to give their own perspectives first or answer questions. So I'll give it back to you as to how you want to go about it.
Frankie, is he here? No.
No, he was coming.
He's bringing his food truck.
Okay. Why don't we look at the, do we each have a copy of this?
So we did send it out, but what I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is I would ask for kind of, you know, big-picture issues and concerns from the folks sitting in front of you, as opposed to trying to go through the ordinance. Kind of get a perspective. Again, you've got food truck folks and restaurant folks. So maybe just kind of go down the line and kind of walk through just a two-minute story of what they do and what their issues are.
Jeff?
All right. So I don't necessarily have any issue to share with you guys, other than presenting what I'm doing. And I met with Laura recently and was able to square away some, maybe for my specific property, the site itself, issues that would have been presented from a zoning standpoint. And I think we figured those things out. I feel very fortunate myself to have a situation where I have a brick-and-mortar and I have a field adjacent to it where I can have a mobile kitchen. I hate using the word trailer because, you know, but yeah, mobile kitchen. So I'm in a unique position. And I came here today mainly to, you know, support my other restaurateurs and friends and the community and just listen. You open.
Okay.
Kevin Farley-Maxx. Kind of concern with me is that it was brought to my attention through the town people coming to my restaurant of the Chick-fil-A being at Tractor Supply. My question was, why? Why is Tractor Supply have a Chick-fil-A there in the first place? No reason whatsoever. I started in COVID, as you all know, struggling, I have a big backyard. I can probably do, again, I'm trying to get into the black. But I've had all Tractor Supply people, from the contractors, from the workers, from the heads, presidents coming in saying, "Listen, I want to work with you guys. Let's work together." They pretty much shut me. I called the manager the other day, and they're like, "Yeah, we'll get back to you." They don't care. I've been in business for 40 years, and it's just my customers saying, "Why are they there? What's the point of them being there? What's, you know, they're coming from Enfield and going back to Enfield with all their money." And then people, look, there's like 40 people that go to that place. I don't go to Tractor Supply no more. I don't, I will not go in there because of it. I've given my all to tell them, like, "Listen, I want to work with you, work together, give you discounts, this and that." Their employees don't come over my place. "Oh, you're too expensive." So the point is, is this, like, you know, we're struggling as a restaurant. Myself up in North Simsbury has been a dead spot for a long time. So more of the customers are telling me, "Hey, what's the reason why?" And I didn't really realize it because I'm so busy cooking, cleaning, barking, doing all that stuff. The point is that I bust out my tush to get there, and these guys just stroll in and stroll right out. So am I opposed to food trucks in town? No. It's just like maybe the fairs, this and that, events, that's fine. But the thing is, is that if I go there, I see 40 people sitting over there, I see money leaving my pocket. That's really about it. I mean, it's just that there's got to be some kind of rules, regulations of being more fair to do stuff. I'm not upsetting, it's just that, all right, I struggle to do it, and I think that should be, you know, they're allowed, but like, there's no ice truck allowed in town, apparently. Or something, when I talked to someone from the town. But there's got to be a time and area for food trucks to do it, like the fly-in or something like that. My big backyard, maybe someday I can get a, not a trailer, but a food truck to go back there and...
Move.
Because I do have a big backyard. I'm trying to have my landlord to extend my building a little bit so I can get a little more business. So like I said, I'm not mad at all, it's just that I want it to be fair for everyone, but it has to be given back to the town some way that we're all giving back to the town with taxes and that. But if someone comes in for an event and leaves, okay, it's fine. But they're there every week on a Saturday or Wednesday, that's a lot, you know. So again, I just don't know why Tractor Supply would have a food truck there, what's the point for them, and not working with us, a small-town people. That's really about it.
They do sell chicken.
I don't serve chicken wings.
Before and after?
Yeah. So that's about it. So I said, I just want, you know, that's really, I mean, I'm not upset, I just wanted, you know, my customers are asking me, "How would you be upset if that happened?" So that's, why would a company not want to work with the town? They have millions of dollars. Like, Jersey Mike's can throw money back into the town because they're building, I'm in the red company and just trying to get back to do stuff. So that's about it.
Chris Nelson, part of the Simsbury Grist Mill and Mill Rights. And I'm going to approach this from our perspective, or my perspective, on the location of where we are. It's all one property, and during the pandemic, we were trying to figure out how to do outdoor dining and do it well. And we realized we have such a beautiful, lower-level patio area that's right on the river, looking over. It's not right on the river where it's a hazard in any way. But it's just gorgeous down there. It's a space that people love, and we really can't serve that out of the kitchen very well at all, even though it's just one building, we're at the opposite end. And so the food truck or mobile kitchen became something that was, it just worked extremely well. It diversified the type of eating environment, and it diversified the type of food. And so it just helped Mill Rights really thrive during that period. So, all right, Tyler, you take over.
So our position is very similar to Jeff's. I'm Tyler from Mill Rights. We have an extended use of our kitchen and a mobile kitchen. It's a trailer, let's be honest. It helps us a lot. It helps us, we're able to prep in a very clean environment because we're using a normal kitchen to prep, and then it sort of goes out there and is assembled out there. And our kitchen, main kitchen, is health-inspected, something you won't see in a lot of food trucks that are just like sort of out there, the vagabonds, if you will. And I have nothing against food trucks personally. Quite honestly, food trucks don't affect my business at Mill Rights, and if they did, that would be some food truck, nor does it affect Jeffrey's. But I'm sort of just here to stand with the other restaurateurs in town. I read Steve Antonio's letter, and I would suggest, if you haven't read it, read it, because it hits home on all points, and that's why I'm here.
Berg, speaking for the collective who sent a written reply. No problem with the boilerplate of the memorandum. The two objections that the collective would have is the two-hour maximum on a food truck. If a food truck shows up at four and sets up and it rains, and their main business is dinner, six, seven, eight with families, that would be a hindrance. Also, a number of food trucks. Sometimes with the collective, they not only have a lot of people inside, that whole area outside, and just like the performing arts, multiple food trucks for those events so we don't have lines and we can feed people in a reasonable period of time. But the Reds themselves don't seem to pose a problem with the boilerplate and licensing and all that, but it, those two items are the ones that stick out to us that would be a hindrance. And just so you know, the collective does not really have a kitchen. Healy Meals has a kitchen. And so when the whole concept was done, we understood that food trucks were going to be, other than a conveyor thing, we have 400 square feet where it mainly does pizzas from Fitzgerald's. And that's what that's for, so anyway. Thank you.
Sorry, you said the first, what was the second one you had? I know you said the two hours. What was the other?
Multiple food trucks.
Yeah. Got you. Sorry, I missed that, sorry. We need more chocolate.
Yeah.
Okay. I brought, I have quite a few issues with this. The first one is, this is a loophole. We're legalizing a loophole if we're going to have a zoning department. It should be zoning, which is to make things level playing fields with thought and regulation of such. To allow people that are not taxed in any manner to do business in Simsbury is a disservice to those that do pay taxes in Simsbury, as I'm sure you're aware, or maybe you're not. All of us that own restaurants pay personal property tax, such as you do on your cars. We pay that on all of our restaurant equipment. A food truck doesn't pay nickel. They come in and they leave, and that's pretty much the whole story behind it. It's an unfair playing field as far as that perspective. To talk about the regulations in particular, I brought with me, and I'll spread them out in a few minutes, the regulations, Newport Rhode Island and Delta food trucks last year. I brought their code of ordinance that they came up with, the food trucks. It's much more encompassing than this. There's a couple of things missing from this. In particular, off the top of my head, alcoholic beverage, such as Queenies comes to town. They're not allowed technically with those that are written there. But most importantly, you have no protection for my brick-and-mortar. Newport Rhode Island has a 250-foot, they were shooting for a thousand-foot cushion for any brick-and-mortar. You cannot set a food truck up within, they wanted it to be 1,000 feet, 250 feet is what was eventually passed. It protects people like Kevin, to be honest, from a food truck literally being across the street. That's a real basic thing. Second of all, the number of licenses. There's nowhere in this document that stipulates a maximum number of licenses. We're a town of 25,000 people, we have 52 restaurant spots, and you know, I'm sure through the grapevine, you've got at least two more coming up in the very near future that are going to be proposed to make 54 restaurants. An even playing field is fair. That's business. People get old, they retire, they move on. That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is a double market saturation. We already have more brick-and-mortar coming, and then to throw food trucks on top of that is just overwhelming. We all give back to our town in a variety of ways. Can you imagine the Girl Scouts or someone going up to these food trucks and saying, "Hey, can I have 20% of your sales today?" They'd laugh at that. They don't get anything from these people. They don't give back to our community in any way. They don't buy the supplies in town, they don't spend their profits in town. I could not be more adamantly against this, but also, as far as if you are going to do it, let me go back to Newport Rhode Island. When they finally went through all the back and forth, they regulated it to six mobile food licenses per year. That's for a town that's 200,000 people in the winter and 3 million in the summer. Six licenses is what they give out, and they've had no problem with that. To touch on the people that do business in town that are members of this community, in particular, not to say it, Tyler, Jeff, Frankie, and honestly, James down at 570, they're a member of our town. They should be given priority on these mobile food vendor licenses. And to stretch to what they're doing right now, to put your mobile food facility in your parking lot is a no-brainer. That's an extension of your kitchen. And as Tyler touched on, it's far more sanitary that some guy that's driving a truck from somewhere that you don't even know what refrigeration, they get a rubber-stamp food permit, they pay 50 bucks for that, and, you know, they're here and gone today. I do feel for Talke Mountain Collective, but they had a kitchen. They choose, they chose to do away with the kitchen. They also have, it's a conveyor. Regardless, it's a stipulation to sell liquor, you have to provide food. It doesn't say have a food truck. That's sort of stretching the liquor laws, but that's not here or there. My point is, there's something that can be worked out with the collective. That's a unique anomaly. It's sort of like Rose Deale and Flemington Farm. When they apply for their public gathering permit, then they can apply and have the food truck. That's how Newport does it. I know that's not how we do it.
Okay. They don't apply for public gathering permits, so.
Talke Mountain Collective or Rose Deale?
Maybe above. Public gathering is only for gatherings on public property.
All right, but still, they're public assembly, whatever the jargon is, I'm screwing up. Yeah, they have to come before you to get their events approved. Did we do away with that?
You have agritourism, so they're under a whole different category.
But it's still...
It's still under purview. It's not a free-for-all, do-all, whatever. Talke Mountain Collective can come to you with a list of events. If it's every weekend, so be it. But that's a way to get in the purview where there's regulations that can be enforced and so on and so forth. And as far as those food vendors, just to circle back, and I'll be done for now, there should only be so many food permits. If you want to have food trucks, fine. To give it a blank slate of however many, don't worry about it. That's an insult to all the people that are paying for the goodwill of the town and the support of the town. And one last thing, I'm so sorry, but I saw on the proposal that you guys handed out that food trucks could be on-town property. I, it's...
It does read that way. If I could, Steve, he's bigger than I am.
Because I sat...
Number one. The collective is a restaurant just like Tyler, number one. Number two, we pay a lot of property taxes, or they do. Number three, the food trucks pay a percentage to the collective for the privilege of being there. So the money does stay in Simsbury, and they pay, the collective pays tax on that and everything else. I just want to be clear, it's not different than some of them.
It is, though. They don't pay taxes.
Just because it's over there in Avon, almost, not quite, but it is a regular restaurant with a restaurant liquor license.
So do you pay taxes on that equipment to the town of Simsbury?
Yeah. Oh, first of all, you kidding me? Of course.
Not on a food truck, Berg. It's a tit-for-tat. I don't want to get caught in a tit-for-tat. I already said the Talke Mountain Collective is a very unique anomaly. I don't think we can write a law that's going to cover that specifically because it will make everything else so vague that I think it's got to be a special exception type of situation.
I'll shut up.
So will I.
I can speak.
Sarah, me, me next.
I'm the only one that can do that.
Sarah Nielsen, Simsbury Main Street Partnership, were the reason that the restaurants are here. There were several restaurants that wanted to comment that couldn't be here today but have emailed me comment. I want to start off by saying that, again, we have nothing against, we fully believe that the existing food-based businesses in Simsbury should be allowed to have their mobile kitchens. That's, we are not disputing that. And in fact, one of my board members, James Chen, was told many years ago that he couldn't park his mobile kitchen on his 570 property. And since then, we've seen other food trucks come into the area. So that's a shame. He had to park it in Gramby. He's a tax-paying business in Simsbury. So we fully believe that these should be allowed and that 570 should be rectified. We are not talking about, as I know this doesn't, the residential components where somebody's having a birthday party or whatever and they want to have a food truck. We're not touching that. We're also not touching the Performing Arts Center. But we want recognition from the restaurants. We helped the restaurants through COVID. Main Street, we passed out PPP, PPE, we did the loans, we updated all the restaurants, we did the outdoor dining and fast-tracking. We tried to keep these restaurants in business. And food trucks will hurt our restaurants. They are. There's a finite amount of money that can be spent on food. And so people have a budget. They spend X number of dollars on groceries, X number of dollars on eating out, and when they eat out at a food truck, that is money that they're taking out of the economy. As Stephen mentioned, as others mentioned, food-based businesses in Simsbury have a much higher share. They employ local people, they pay their taxes, they're regulated by the Health District, they're regulated by the Town of Simsbury Building Department, they're regulated by the Fire District. So all of these things come into play. Jason Brown, when I talk, you know, we have a very close relationship with the Health District and with Henry Miga, and a lot of that stuff isn't regulated. Patrick doesn't come out to the food truck at Chick-fil-A and make sure that it's safe. Okay? So they are all experiencing a very high cost to do business, and they give back to the community on top of that. When you allow somebody to drive in, collect the money out of the economy, and drive out, you're doing a disservice to our businesses, to our residents. So again, you know, we really highly recommend, and again, the Talke Collective being a very different situation, and if we see others like that being able to deal with that. But it's not fair to continually allow these food trucks to come in, take the money out of the economy, and leave. You will see more closures. We're working with McLaddens and we're working with the Nacherians right now on the Joe Pizza space and the McLadden space. We're working on, there's another placement, like, we've been working on all of these things, but it hurts, and the rents are higher, and it's harder to get people in. And if you add food trucks in, it's going to be even harder for those property owners as well to rent their spaces.
The other is, if you recall, the Historic Society last year had a food truck in the parking lot for the whole year. Okay? And it was like, I watched, my building's right next door, and I watched what happened around lunchtime and all that. But they'd pick up and they'd leave. The other thing about food trucks is, most of them don't accept credit cards, so it's a cash business. So there's no money that goes anywhere. But I had someone call me, ask me if they could rent my parking lot on the weekends. Right here, across the street. I said, "No," for the reason is, it's going to hurt the existing restaurants that are in the community. I'm fine with Tyler's truck, your truck, you're already here, so having an extension of your business is fine. And for, like Frankie, for all the festivals he does, he's on the road, but he's not parked somewhere in someone's private parking lot paying me rent or a percentage of sales for his use of that food truck, which, as these guys have all said, it's not regulated, we don't know what goes on inside those trucks. I know some guys that are extremely successful with food trucks, but as a business owner, as a property owner, and as a resident in town, I would be very against having outside vendors coming in other than the festivals that we have and being able to park across the street from Mill Rights. I just bought that building across the street from you, Tyler, and I'm going to put eight food trucks out there.
Good luck. I think we'll be all right.
As a community, I think you got to be very, very careful on what you do and what you allow, because we want to support the businesses that are here. The collective is a different situation. They don't have a kitchen. So they park a permanent food truck or bring in someone new every weekend, but I'm going to, I'm going to the collective for the atmosphere, for the music, for the drinks, and to eat. But if I see a food truck in my parking lot and I'm driving by, "Hm, oh, look at that," you know, I just don't think it's something this town should even consider. I think we need to support these guys. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, can I read the Anna's Kitchen into record as well?
Sure.
Okay. So this is from...
We're not keeping your record, by the way.
All right. This is Helena, this is Helena and Anna from Anna's Kitchen in West Simsbury. She said, "Restaurants are not only an essential part of this town's character and identity, but also contribute significantly to the local economy. They are an integral part of this town's cultural fabric and invest heavily in the community, sponsoring local events and supporting other local businesses. The pandemic has been a challenging time for many businesses, and restaurants have been among the hardest hit. With lockdowns and restrictions limiting our capacity, we have all struggled to stay afloat. Even as restrictions have lifted, the industry continues to face numerous challenges, including rising inflation and supply chain disruptions. Now, as restaurants work hard to recover from the effects of the past years, we could be facing a new challenge: the unfair competition of food trucks. While food trucks may seem like a fun and trendy addition to any community, they do not face the same expenses or regulations as brick-and-mortar restaurants. This creates an uneven playing field and puts traditional restaurants at a disadvantage. We're tired of unfair challenges." And then the final thing is from Harvest Cafe. There was a death in the family, so Kim couldn't be here tonight, but she did send me an email. Well, you know she's crazy because she started out with, "I 100% agree with Stephen," because I sent the invitation to tonight's workshop along with the...
We better check her refrigeration.
...the Stephen's letter to all my restaurants. "We've had enough issues with the saturation of restaurants in town. Recently, I've been seeing a Chick-fil-A truck on Wednesday at lunchtime at the Tractor Supply. When there are hockey and soccer tournaments, we are busier for breakfast and lunch. If food trucks are allowed at those restaurants, that will be another hit to our business. I understand food trucks at certain large events at the Meadows, but it should be first available to town businesses who desire to work those events in their trucks or on-site like Fitzgerald's. We call it death from 1,000 cuts at harvest: the wholesale prices, COVID backlash, expensive labor, shortage of labor, multiple restaurants in town doing the same type of thing, massive repairs, it goes on and on. It is extremely difficult to make ends meet. We keep trying to adapt to the circumstances and bring the customer the things they love." And that was it. I didn't get anything from Mark. He does have COVID from Redstone, but I understand that Mark was also not in favor.
Okay, that's fine. So what you all are saying is that food trucks is an accessory use on an otherwise occupied business, something that we should prohibit?
Yes, that's, they are saying that, kind of, food truck on an unrelated spot.
Non-food-based.
Not food-based. Yes, that is overwhelmingly what they're saying.
Let's assume that we decide that's a good thing. What are the exceptions? You've got food trucks...
The exceptions are in purview, actually.
Food trucks at horse shows.
Private events.
Yeah, that's an event. Private events. That is a private event, which we're not talking about, right?
Okay. So private events.
Yep.
Polyfarm.
We have that included in our agritourism, which is what Stephen alerted to.
But do we actually have, do we have something that says that the existing Simsbury food-based businesses can have a food truck, like a James Chen? Or did they, I mean, does he have to go through the same?
Not yet.
Then we would suggest adding that.
Where are you going to put it?
I only defer to Laura.
Yeah, so that's the question.
That's kind of what...
That is the question, where can those go, then?
We can have them, but we can't have accessory food trucks.
Share the same address, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Same address.
You say at the same address.
But it has to specify food service businesses.
Right, and here it doesn't specify food service business?
We want to specify.
So that would be a clear exception.
Yes.
Truck added existing food service business.
Food service.
Existing restaurant.
Yep.
Which also gives the Talke Mountain Collective the ability to operate.
So the accessory use, you allow accessory use, but it's wide open to anything in this regulation. Just restrict that accessory use to a food service or. Didn't you?
No, but we've been working on it for, uh, two years now? Yeah. And would that take care, I mean, that really does take care of everybody's.
I do like the limit too.
Issue.
Oh, I agree.
If we're not going to allow them.
Well, true, yeah, very true, yeah, true.
Yeah.
Is there any reason why we would limit for the private, private events? I'm, I'm just asking, like, do we have a limit currently?
Events currently would be excluded, I believe, with the language that everyone seems to be agreeing upon.
Excluded with an administrative approval? Or just totally excluded? You can do anything.
Like the residential.
If you're having one at your house.
Right now, someone's got, you know, having a pizza truck come to their son's graduation party. I, one, don't know about it, and two, don't want to be involved in that.
You don't want your zoning department.
I do taco is in margaritas on my block.
Right now, food trucks are listed under our public gathering permit process, but those are for the events mostly that you have at the pack. There's no language that says which food truck. We do say, I do make sure that when the public gathering permit does come across me and ask that Jason Brown or Health Department or Health Department gets a chance to see him. That's another reason that broke this, is that food trucks were appearing and there was absolutely no permit going on. No fire merchant check, no health department check, and they were sitting on property that, you know, really brought up a question. Do you want it or do you not want it?
I've seen the private gathering thing exploited and it could be exploited at the hardware store or whatever the, the Chick-fil-A is going to. Some language about transactions taking place from, I've, so we, we tried to go in a place and somebody suggested we go in as private, but in their, in their bylaws or whatever, it said that there had to be more than one transaction, or there couldn't be more than one transaction, so one payer for the food truck instead of people going up to the food truck and making transactions? It's sort of like eliminates a loophole.
Yeah.
But again, the loophole for that would be, they're not an existing service business.
So if, but if I'm calling in a, somebody for my daughter's pizza party and thirty people come to my house, I write the check.
Correct.
Right? So this, by saying that it has to be a single transaction payment, eliminates them from having to get permitting.
We do have, at Highcroft is an example.
Yeah.
They would have a Free Food Friday where all the residents can come and gather and have a little party for a few hours. And bringing a food truck in was very popular in that environment. Now, it is a residential neighborhood, I suppose, but it's also kind of commercial because it's, it's apartment.
But doesn't Highcroft pay for that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But that's the one, that's what they say.
Single transaction.
Yeah.
And what about the fireman's carnival when this?
The carnival's no longer.
Huh?
They brought it back.
But that's fine.
Special event.
Then they would go for permits, and they would be going for.
There is, if as much.
A gathering permit.
There is already something that does discuss a little bit of carnivals, which mostly covered like your fairs and what have you for a certain amount of days. I believe it's anything under ten comes up.
Look, the three days, isn't it, as you say?
Three to ten, that's what I'm looking for right now.
There, there's a, there's a, there's an exempt category you can describe that, that covers those special carnivals and those kinds of things.
For a period of not more than ten days, that's subject, so that was. For less than three consecutive days, shall be exempt from the regulations, and that was kind of saying. It's not your carnivals or.
Yeah, that would be like St. Mary's Carnival.
Yes.
So can you speak to the historic?
That ended up, um, the stories. Stories I actually did go out there, have them, have them leave for first time. They ended up getting, perhaps you wouldn't call this a loophole at all, it was called under a ongoing special effect. It was supposed to be set there for a certain amount of times. It wasn't supposed to be every day. And I don't believe it was. It was only there for a certain time, and it was only for summer, so it was an entire year. I believe it was six weeks ultimately.
She's looking at me because I was the one who pushed it. It was supposed, yeah, it was supposed to be special event thing.
It was supposed to be associated with that.
We did bring in people from out there, so it was good for the society.
But you did bring in trucks from Simsbury.
And it wasn't from Simsbury and it did hurt. I heard lots of comments from, complaints from Plan B and from the winged bear and Krieger's people, so. I mean, again, I think instead of dwelling on what was, you know, what you're hearing seems to be consensus. You know, we would like to see, and we actually encourage, our existing food-based businesses, if they want to have a mobile kitchen or they want to have a food truck on their site, we encourage that. I would also, and I know you can't make this as a regulation, but it would be nice for the Performing Arts Center to ask our Simsbury-based food, food trucks first, when there are events. And I know we can't regulate that, but I am putting it out there because you are also leaders in the community. That, again, these people pay taxes, give back to the community, employ locally. And so it would be great if we do everything as a town to encourage their survival.
And all fearless, I think they do. I know that I got an email.
Yes.
No, we had to push it. If you know, remember, Main Street, I got complaints from, like, when John Darkangelo was in Simsbury and they would leave him out for Ben and Jerry's, I got complaints. So I'm just saying, I, again, I think they've gotten much better. And we, it's been an education process and we've worked with Jeff Dornenberg and he's phenomenal and his board, but.
That can be something as it was recommended, you know, list of the refresh food trucks, you know.
I like that. Yeah, and I, like I said, I know it can't be regulated, but I would just like to put that out there while we're discussing this, that these people sitting at the table should get first right of refusal to some of these big events.
Yeah, actually, no, that's good. I was thinking the same thing, like, maybe a Main Street partnership put together, like, an actual curated list and then you can have it in your office when people come into the park.
We absolutely would do that.
The reference we have does not include the center district.
Correct.
It does not.
So that's not a consideration, that's, do we want anything in the center district? We were relieving the center district house.
We did that on purpose.
It's set up in zoning district?
I know. We all do the downtown regs. We all hate it.
But Sarah, what do you think? Because right now, they're not allowed in the center.
Again, I, I wouldn't, I think that if it is, I think that what we could do is instead of removing the center district, we keep in the, you know, again, if you're a food-based service business and you would like to have a mobile kitchen, we encourage that. And there, I, I would add that. I wouldn't take the, the center out.
If I could add though, it should be on that restaurant's property, the same brand.
Same brand, same address. Yes. Yep, agreed.
Okay.
Sounds like we agree that we don't allow food trucks on non-food related sites.
So we, so we clearly said, would permit the Tractor Supply situation.
Correct.
We hear that.
Right, or any other industrial.
Or those similar.
If Dave Richman wanted to put a food truck in his, his rental.
Absolutely not.
That would be it.
Right.
It's a hard time.
I think if tourism was so strong like Newport that the existing restaurants can't feed the people during a lunch hour, there's reasons to push that.
I'm sorry, Chris, to interrupt you, you would get a very different answer from the restaurateurs.
Yeah.
They're, they're just like us. They're clawing, there's no one in the restaurant business that's just big. You know, they're fighting to survive. That's why there were only six permits for that whole town allowed, is because there is no additional dollars to support out of town. Sorry to, uh.
That's fine.
To interject.
Just saying, we don't have that suggest, situation anyways.
An office though would want to have something come in for their, for.
Private.
I actually disagree because that's taking money out of our pocket. We do cater to offers, office buildings, as I think we all do, on occasion through the delivery services in town. That is covered. I would be fine though, to be honest, if it was an Simsbury business like Tyler or Jeff or James or Frankie doing it. But seeing somebody come into town, you know, it's not that I want to close the community, I just want all of us to survive. I don't have a food truck, but it'd be fine with me if a Simsbury business did. But as far as, that's another loophole we're opening up.
I think you have to be, yeah, I think that starts to create a very messy situation.
Unless it's a single payer.
They can, listen, we're not exempting people, you can still order a beautiful catering meal and they do for your office. And that, that is not, but you can't park a food truck on your site, is what we're saying.
Open to the public.
A Chick-fil-A and give that to them.
But I wouldn't say Chick-fil-A, but going back to the single payer. They are a single payer.
Then it's catering. That would be, I mean, that would be fine with me.
So that's okay.
It's a truck that's just delivering catering essentially, yeah. For me, that's fine.
Yeah, it currently is existing.
If you're not open to the public and you're not taking away, you know, people that are driving down the street seeing your food truck, it doesn't bother me at all.
For the employees.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, not open to the public.
Right.
And it's a single payer.
Single payer, yeah.
So employers can bring it in and not have a single payer though. The thing, my wife does this, she's having a major commitment to transit. And so they bring in people, this is in Hartford, it's not in Connecticut. But, you know, they will, you know.
Some of us are in Hartford too.
Oh, Tyler, you show off.
You know, I don't know that we have anybody doing that in town. It wouldn't be dissimilar from what you're doing at Highcroft. You know, because you don't pay for all of that sometimes.
Yeah, they do.
In that case, it's a very specific thing.
Chris is very jealous.
Okay, so we're, we got off the track. And I think we did say, then we agreed on no food trucks as accessory uses in industrial business zones.
Correct.
Existing food service organizations can have a food truck.
At the same address.
At the same address. And we're not addressing private locations or the Performing Arts Center or some, some of it would be covered under a public gathering permit.
Yeah.
Could I press, press my leg a little bit?
Sure.
The food truck season for us would like to open in May 15 going forward.
Wait, for you as Highcroft?
No, no.
In Millwrights.
He switched back to Millwrights.
But, because it's outdoor dining, it's starting to be nice and the weather's right and whatnot. So I hope that the stuff that's agreed upon could be approved in the near future rather than.
Starting today.
Huh?
I have a question. I know we don't have any breweries in town, but if we had a brewery, how are they impacted? Because breweries always have food trucks. Yeah, so if we have a brewery.
They would be impacted.
Yeah, so that's, I think we should at least carve out something if we get a brewery in town, that we would be able to allow something for that.
And we are working on a brewery.
Or make them get a food license.
I'm making, we want that to happen.
It would be a brewery slash restaurant, actually, so that might come.
Would be.
The way, the way it's practiced, we'll take a, take a shot, carve out on those exemptions. And then we'll have, you know, considering.
Yeah, I don't think there's a number. I think if you're part, I think if you're, try to track.
Allow it offsite as long as it's a Simsbury-based truck. Right, so, you know, if there were a brewery, could we not have Antonio's truck at the brewery? So even though we just said it would be an accessory use on your property, you know, whatever you did, you went to another one. As long as it's a Simsbury-based truck.
I don't think you can do that.
I'd be careful about that part.
You'd have to do the Simsbury license.
Here's the, here's the licenses. What we will do, George and staff will take what we've said here, draft some proposed regulations. We will discuss them and then we will propose them. And we have a public hearing. And during the public hearing of the regulations, we invite all you guys back to comment on what we've done. And we can, in fact, send you the draft.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll send it to Sarah.
Do the same thing I did.
As soon as we've gotten it into place. And then, uh, once we have the public hearing, then we can vote on it. And so it's probably at best the end of June, maybe July. So you just have to run like a legal business.
I'll just take the wheels off, just put it on the ground. It's not a truck anymore.
No, because we're.
Also, the distance from food truck to a grocery store, or some town did 250 feet, but they thought about 1,000. Why isn't it 1,000?
Because we said we're not going to allow.
On property same address.
We're not going to allow food trucks.
Well, I missed that part. We were.
No. Because the rule is no food trucks as accessory uses on non-restaurant properties. Unless it's a private organization, you know, your, your house. Okay. I think George feels like he can draft something that meets what you've sort of agreed here. We'll look at it and take whatever time it takes to fix it. There are already too many brewers in Connecticut anyway. Believe me.
Listen, bringing one more.
How many beers can you drink?
All of them.
Excuse me?
Anybody, anybody who's gone on a tour.
We'd love to.
Guinness Brewery in Dublin knows that Guinness contains vitamins. Many vitamins.
It's basically good for the town.
Yeah, and we thank the Commission for working with our restaurants. They do appreciate it, they appreciate the ability to be heard. A lot of them are very sad they couldn't make it, but they have the emails and things.
Thank you.
I'm really glad you're okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.